Karen Adams.
Here.
Karen Berry.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Here.
Joseph Demott.
Here.
Joyce Jay.
Here.
Wanda Sang.
Here.
And Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
And let the record show Davis Reinhardt is absent.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of October 10, 2011?
Second.
We have a motion for approval seconded by Councilmember Stites. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
We have one proclamation for National Food Day. I was going to ask Barbara Moore to please step forward and Carol Sue Frickle for Food Day. Ms. Berry, were you going to do this all at once with the National Food Day? Okay. So, Ms. Karen Thaler from Wheat Ridge, please do the proclamation for National Food Day first. Sorry, Barbara, we're almost there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council, citizens of Wheat Ridge, good evening. Whereas ensuring healthy food access to all our citizens is a concern for the city of Wheat Ridge, and whereas reducing obesity and fat-related diseases by promoting safe and healthy food consumption is a critical factor in improving citizens' overall health, and whereas supporting community-based agriculture and local farms benefits the Wheat Ridge economy, supports community, cultural, and civic engagement across the lifespan, and supports vibrant and resilient neighborhoods, and whereas the city of Wheat Ridge, the Wheat Ridge Access to Fresh Foods and Vegetables Task Force, Wheat Ridge 2020, CSU Extension, Harvest Mountain, Jefco Public Schools, and a network of private citizens strive to increase community-based agriculture, community gardens, school gardens, and urban farms of varying sizes and models to support a mix of scales and types of growing in Wheat Ridge, and whereas the city of Wheat Ridge adopted sweeping amendments to its zoning code to encourage the growing and selling of locally grown produce in Wheat Ridge on May 23, 2011. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Jerry DiTulio and the Wheat Ridge City Council proclaim that Monday, October 24, 2011, as National Food Day.
Any other proclamation for Lung Cancer Awareness Month and Great America Smokeout?
Whereas tobacco is still the leading cause of preventable death and disease in the United States, and whereas the U.S. Surgeon General has said there is no risk-free level of exposure to tobacco smoke, and there is no safe tobacco product, and whereas lung cancer is the leading cancer killer in both men and women, and 85% of cases are caused by tobacco smoke, and whereas more than 4,300 Coloradans will die each year and 92,000 Colorado youth who are now under the age of 18 will ultimately die prematurely from tobacco-related illnesses if smoking rates and exposure to secondhand smoke remain unchanged, and whereas tobacco use and secondhand smoke creates a burden on our businesses and communities through healthcare costs, reduced productivity, premature death and disease, and environmental damage, and whereas approximately 70% of people who smoke want to quit smoking, and whereas on the Great American Smokeout, youth and adult tobacco users are encouraged to use the date to plan, to make a plan to quit or to plan in advance and quit smoking, and whereas smoke-free policies are proven approaches to reduce consumption, increase cessation, and discourage youth from starting, and whereas Jefferson County Public Health and Example Lutheran Medical Center are committed to reducing the burden of tobacco use and helping youth and adults in our community live tobacco-free. Now therefore be it resolved, Mayor Jerry DiTulio and the Wheat Ridge City Council declare November Lung Cancer Awareness Month and November 17, the Great American Smokeout.
Thank you. So now we have an award for Barbara Moore of Harvest Mountain Gardens presented by Councilmember Berry. Barbara, go ahead and step up to the podium, please. Thank you.
In 2009, Barbara took a vacant lot in Wheat Ridge and turned it into a community garden. Barbara raises organic produce. She gets a lot of the neighbors involved, schoolchildren, teaches schoolchildren about organic farming. A lot of the produce that Barbara raises, she gives to local food banks. Barbara is one of these folks that just kind of gets out and does it. While many of us have been sitting in meetings about how to get urban agriculture going in the area, Barbara just kind of went out and did it. And she started another site in Lakewood and is looking for more, and Barbara uses a lot of organic principles. Barbara has done things with the produce in terms of water use. Barbara shows we can have our veggies and eat them too, because Barbara has used very efficient drip irrigation systems, so Barbara's been able to raise a high-yield produce on less water than it takes to water your yard. So Barbara has not only gotten the community involved, has used some vacant property and put it to great use. Barbara's also been a great natural resource steward of our community resources, also our natural resources. And for all the work that Barbara's done, the Jefferson Conservation District nominated Barbara as our Small Farmer of the Year, and she was selected for the Upper South Flat Watershed, which was, which is all of northeast Colorado. And Barbara's going to go on to our state competition, and we're really plugging for her. So with this, I want to give a certificate to Barbara for all the work that she's done for the community and for Wheat Ridge, and thank you very much, Barbara.
Thank you.
And Molly, did you want to come say something about National Food Day?
Well, thank you so much. I have a packet for council and the mayor. Thank you. So, Mayor and council, thank you for declaring Food Day in Wheat Ridge to celebrate the first National Food Day here in the country. My name is Molly Hansen. Live at Wheat Ridge is a coalition working in concert with multiple partners to increase access to healthy food through a network of programs and initiatives, many of which were highlighted in the proclamation tonight. A critical component to a healthy and productive life is access to safe, affordable, and nutritionally rich food. In the United States, more than one out of six children lives in a household with food insecurity, which means that they do not always know where their food will come next or their next meal will come from. According to the USDA, 16.2 children under the age of 18 in the U.S. lives in this condition, unable to consistently access nutritious and adequate amounts of healthy food for healthy life. We know creating healthy, resilient, thriving families, neighborhoods, and communities is critical to strengthening the fiber of our community here in Wheat Ridge, so please join us in this movement. I have included in your packet information on food insecurity and some information on how we can grow community-based agriculture in Wheat Ridge. Great example of Barbara here. We also invite the mayor, council, and Wheat Ridge residents to celebrate National Food Day with the Wheat Ridge Access to Fresh Foods and Vegetables Task Force tomorrow evening on Tuesday, October 25, 2011. Amanda Weaver, a Wheat Ridge resident and farm owner, will host a panel discussion of Wheat Ridge growers to talk about urban agriculture in our community. We'll have a community potluck that will feature locally grown food, and we'll watch the city's urban agriculture top-of-the-hour segment during our time together. We'll meet from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. at the ye olde firehouse at 32:32 to pew. All are invited, and please join us. Again, thank you so much for your support around food access and urban agriculture here in Wheat Ridge. Happy National Food Day.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. Citizens' right to speak
is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. When you are speaking at the podium, you will see a green light when you start speaking, a yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and a red light when your time is up. So please step forward to the podium if you have any items to speak about that's not on the agenda tonight. And please spell your last name for the record. Please spell your last name for the record, and please state your city or your address.
Good evening. My name is Bob Doyle, D-O-Y-L-E. Executive Director of the Colorado Tobacco Education Prevention Alliance. We're based 14221 East Fourth in Aurora, Colorado. Also a member of Breathe Easy Wheat Ridge. I'm just here today to thank you for the proclamation regarding Lung Cancer Awareness Month and the Great American Smokeout. Because of tobacco use, my children never got a chance to meet my mother. I lost my mother to a tobacco-related disease. Unfortunately, in Colorado, thousands of families are going to get that news this year. The good news is we can save many lives. The good news is many smokers want to quit. And the great news for Wheat Ridge is Example Lutheran is hosting, as part of their Destination Wellness Campaign, Quit Smoking workshops. And the next workshop is on November 9 at 6:00 p.m., and then they'll have another workshop in December, at December 14. So my message out there is please utilize the resources that are out there. Please feel free to call me or email me. My email's BDoyle@CTEPA.org. Our phone number is 303-577-9991. Anyone who would like to quit, anyone who'd like to support somebody to quit smoking, please call us, because the great news is most smokers want to quit. There are resources available, and we'd love to help them. So thank you. Thank you, Example Lutheran, for offering these courses to help tobacco users quit. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Carol Salzman, S-A-L-Z-M-A-N-N, 10285 West 33rd Avenue, Wheat Ridge. And I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the hospital, Example Lutheran Medical Center. First, we want to thank you also for the proclamation for the tobacco-free lifestyle. It's something that we're really encouraging at the hospital, and Bob and the Jefferson County Department of Health has been very instrumental in helping Lutheran on our journey to a tobacco-free community. So we encourage you to attend those workshops. The week of the Great American Smokeout, which is November 17, we'll also have information at the hospital in the main lobby about tobacco-free lifestyles, so that's something that the community might want to stop by the hospital and check out. I'm really here also to say a thank you, and the thank you is to the citizens of Wheat Ridge for joining us on Saturday, last Saturday, October 22. The community came out, not in large force, but in small groups, both youth, Girl Scouts, employees, including our own president and CEO, Grant Wicklin and his family, to help beautify Lutheran as part of Make a Difference Day. And so I know that was a proclamation from a couple weeks ago, and we look forward to having another Make a Difference Day in the future, and again invite the community of Wheat Ridge to come and help us support the beautification of Example Lutheran. Thank you.
Hello again. Karen Thaler, T-H-A-L-E-R. I live at 6161 West 29th Place in Wheat Ridge, District 1. I just want to give a reminder to all the citizens in Wheat Ridge. Voting is a little over a week away. It is November 1, not the 8. There's still some confusion on that when I'm going door-to-door, so just want some clarification that it is November 1, and I believe ballots need to be in by 7:00 p.m. Correct, Michael?
Yes.
By 7:00 p.m. on a week from Tuesday. So please exercise your right to vote, and if you haven't done so, I ask for your vote this evening. Again, Karen Thaler in District 1. Thank you.
Hi. Janelle Shaver, 8890 West 35th Avenue. That's S-H-A-V-E-R. Normally, I think that this particular time should be reserved for things that really have to do kind of with city business or the citizens of Wheat Ridge, but I want to take this opportunity to correct something. I was roundly taken to task at the end of last week for not answering the questions in your hub as a candidate for city clerk, and I wanted to share everyone that I'm not a negligent slug and who just didn't want to answer the questions. I never got any communication from the folks who run the post or the hub, and so I didn't know anything about it. No phone messages, no, nothing in the U.S. Post, nothing on email. So I just wanted to let folks know that. Thanks. Bye.
Thanks. Mr. Doyle, I've had a couple of people up here say they object to people making comments about elections. Once again, this is public comment. What's your legal ruling on that?
That's right. It's always been the case that public comment is for any item that the citizen wants to speak about, and that can include that citizen's candidacy. It always has been the case.
And like I've said, I've only cut people off if they were being swearing or rude or threatening.
Yeah. Those are the only limits that the council, that can be placed on public comment, if you have a public comment section. You're not required to have a public comment section, but once you have one, any topic is permitted.
Just want to clarify again for the record, because I hear it every time. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Are any changes tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Councilmember Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The consent agenda, 1A, Resolution Number 45, 2011, amending the fiscal year 2011 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $30,000 for city attorney fees. 1B, motion to accept 32nd Avenue right-of-way and construction easements from Longspeak Metro, Longspeak District. 1C, motion to schedule a special council meeting on October 31, 2011, and to counsel the study session of November 7, 2011, and the regular council meeting of November 14, 2011. 1D, motion to approve payment of the sales tax increment for the third quarter of fiscal year 2011 from the Town Center project in the amount of $45,558.82 to the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, or Renewal Wheat Ridge. 1E, motion to award the reevaluation of the I-70 32nd Avenue Environmental Assessment Contract to Felsberg Holm Ulevig of Centennial, Colorado for not to exceed a amount of $19,296. 1F, motion to award the Police Department Roof Replacement Contract to Independent Roofing Specialists of Commerce City, Colorado, in the amount of $23,420.
Mr. Stites?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to pull 1C.
I'd like to pull 1D.
So we're pulling 1C and 1D. Emotions in order for the rest. Mr. Demott?
I'd like to pull 1B, please.
So we're, the motion for the rest of them, Mr. Demott? It's like it's A.
(laughing).
A, A-E and F? B isn't Boy, or E isn't Edward? B isn't Boy.
I move to approve 1A, 1E, and 1F.
Second.
We have a motion approval of 1A, E and F. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council.
The motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 1B. If B isn't Boy.
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Pronto. On this particular item, the estimated cost of modifications to the Wells Fargo parking lot is $58,500. And then in the motion, it says that we accept the obligations associated with the assigned use of the district's easement and engineering documents. Is that what the $58,500 is for, the engineering, or for the parking lot itself?
The $58,000 is the estimated cost to build replacement parking for that that's going to be removed by the acquisition of the strip of approximately 20-foot of right-of-way that's needed for the widening of 32nd. And it is anticipated that the owners of the property would prefer payment in lieu of the construction of the parking spaces. So that's why we try to specify what the estimated cost would be, so that you'd be aware that that would be an additional cost to the city.
Okay, so the only additional cost will be $58,500 to your knowledge at this time, and then it's done, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you. I'll read the motion now?
Emotions in order.
Okay. "I move to accept the 32nd Avenue right-of-way and construction easement from the Longspeak Metropolitan District. I also move to accept the obligations associated with the assigned use of the district's easements and engineering documents."
Second.
We have a motion for approval of 1B, as stated in the packet. It was seconded by Councilmember Stites. Discussion on 1B. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 1C, Mr. Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to cancel the city council study session scheduled for November 7, 2011, and the regular council meeting scheduled for November 14, 2011.
Second.
We have a motion to, for approval of 1C, less the special meeting on October 31. It was seconded by Councilmember Demott and Sang. Discussion on the main motion. So all we're canceling, Mr. Goff, is the study session and the regular meeting on the 14. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item D, Councilmember Sang?
Yes, I have a new motion for item D. I move, could I have a resolution number, please?
Oh, yes. The resolution would be 49-2011.
I move, I move to approve Resolution 49-2011, Series 2011, a resolution approving a second amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, and in connection therewith, approving a supplemental budget appropriation. I further move to approve payment of sales tax increment for the third quarter of fiscal year 2011 from the Town Center project in the amount of $91,117.64 to the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority. I further move to payment of $94,469.24 representing additional sales tax increment payment obligations for the first two quarters of fiscal year 2011, and under the certain Second Amendment to intergovernmental agreement approved by the council on October 24, 2011.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval for Resolution 49, as stated by Councilmember Sang, seconded by Councilmember Stites. Discussion on the main motion. Item 1D. Ms. Jay?
Do I understand this correctly, that that additional amount will come from our 2011 budget?
Mr. Goff?
Yeah, those funds will come from the undesignated reserves of the general fund 2011.
So it does come from our reserve, which means that going into the 2012 budget, we will have less funds available.
Correct.
Correct. And further, if I gather this one correctly, for future years, this will go until 2014, that we will continue to have less funds available for those future budgets?
The sales tax increment shareback will be increased, correct?
Right. I will vote in favor of this, but I am feeling a little uncomfortable of handing to the new council a further reduced budget when we are so close on expenditures that we have allotted for the future. That's a considerable amount of money, and I don't think we were aware of it at the time we approved the 2011 budget, because I do want this to progress. I do want to see the completion of 44th and Wadsworth. I will vote for it, but I am concerned about it.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Berry?
The last time we talked about the city subsidizing the project, it was for a set number we had approved, and I understand that there's a closing coming up, and you need to know that the person purchasing the property needs to know whether the city can install the infrastructure that's needed to serve that development, as well as the rest of the development. My really big concern here, just comment, is it seems like we knew this agreement was in place, that some infrastructure was going to have to be built, that, kind of getting this at the last minute, and it's not a paltry amount. Kind of bothers me. And I know the Urban Renewal Authority are volunteers, and there's a lot of stuff in play here, but I would just say if they're going to come, and we need to know what the total city exposure is on this project, and if the figures are going to change, having some advance notice and being able to discuss this and to decide where it's going to come out of the budget, I think is important. The fact that it's happening kind of on the last minute is the part that bothers me, and that we can't really think of, look at it comprehensively.
Any other comments? Ms. Adams?
I guess my question would be surrounding the payback, when and if the two other parcels are, we will be getting some money back when those are sold. Is that correct?
Correct. We have three total parcels, and one we're under contract to sell and hopefully close about November 15. And that contract is for $880,000. And then we have two other parcels, one along 44th, and then one more of an interior parcel. And based on some estimated square, dollars per square foot, we're looking at, I think about 1 point... Yeah, about 1.6, 1.7 million, hopefully, total from the other two properties we're hoping to get.
That will come back to the Urban Renewal Authority, correct?
Correct.
And the infrastructure costs for those two, I guess it would be prudent that we get that done to make those two assailable, two saleable pieces of property, correct?
Correct. And the infrastructure costs that we know today of about 1.1, it's a little bit higher than what we originally estimated, based on the bids we got in. But to the infrastructure work that's required for the Wazi Partners senior housing building to go in, is a majority of the work that needs to be done for the other two properties to develop. There's approximately additional 400,000 of other infrastructure improvements that will be needed beyond this 1.1, and that includes a new street light at Vance and 44th, and a few other infrastructure needs. So a majority of the sales from the other two pads will go back to the Urban Renewal Authority to pay other debt on this project.
And who will be marketing those two parcels?
Our master developer for the site, Weston Solutions, has hired Lampert Hicks, which is a very large brokerage firm in the Denver area. Their signs are up on the property today. Just spoke to them, and they're receiving interest on the site, and they hope after once, they hope after the Wazi project starts, there's going to be even more interest, because there will actually be infrastructure on the site, and that's when people actually get really interested.
And that makes it a little more comfortable, knowing that we'll get some money back and that there is some interest, even in this downtime of economy. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Please poll the council. Oh, Ms. Jay?
I am pleased to learn that we are actively marketing those other additional properties that would offset these unexpected expenses.
Yeah, and the hope is that all the properties develop to produce additional sales tax and property tax that the city's not seeing today, which will help pay off the debt.
Please poll the council.
Motion carries six to one, with Councilmember Demott voting no.
The next item on the agenda is ordinances and public hearings. On second reading, the order of testimony will be city staff, and then the public, followed by council discussion and questions. Please keep all comments remain to the issue. So move on to council bill, item number two is Council Bill 32-2011. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 32-2011, an ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning regulation of massage therapy and massage parlors.
Will the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
Yes. Council Bill 32-2011 will be assigned ordinance number 1504.
Thanks. Do we have a staff report?
Brief staff report, primarily for the benefit of the public, since we haven't had a public hearing on this, although you've seen it in study session a couple of times, and also at first reading. And the short course on it is that the state statutes prohibit the city from regulating massage therapy practice, the practice of massage therapy, which requires, among other things, 500 hours of training. It's the kind of therapy that you'll see in hospitals and the like. It does allow, however, the state statutes do allow cities to regulate massage parlors, massage conducted by individuals who are other than these state-certified massage therapists. And so this ordinance eliminates conflicting provisions in the city's code on massage therapy practice, and just eliminates that, and then adds a few restrictions to the massage parlor code that the city has, because it was incomplete and relied on definitions that are now otherwise getting deleted. And there are some restrictions in terms of the location for parlors, and also the clothing for the employees and conduct of the operation. I should say that the spacing requirements will apply to... I should say that, that the spacing requirements will apply to new massage parlors, but not existing massage parlors in the city, because they would become, under the law, legal non-conforming uses in those locations. The clothing and other interior requirements would apply to those existing facilities, and we will be working with them, sending out notice of, to them of the change in this ordinance. If council approves it, to bring them into compliance with those interior requirements.
Thanks. Do we have anybody from the public to speak on item number two tonight, Council Bill thirty-two dash two thousand and eleven? Seeing none, we'll move on to council questions or discussion. We're going to close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill number thirty-two two thousand and eleven, and ordinance approving the amendment of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the regulation of massage therapy and massage parlors on second reading, and it will take effect fifteen days after final publication.
We have a motion for approval, was seconded by Councilmember Adams. Discussion on the motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item three is Resolution forty-two dash two thousand and eleven. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Berry?
Resolution forty-two two thousand and eleven, a resolution approving a final plat with right-of-way dedications on property zone plan commercial development located at seventy-four ninety-five West Twenty-Ninth Avenue. The applicant is requesting approval of a final plat on property zone plan commercial development located at seventy-four ninety-five West Twenty-Ninth Avenue. Because, because the plat approval includes right-of-way dedications, Planning Commission will be giving a recommendation to city council for final action. The Planning Commission public hearing is set for October twentieth.
I need to swear everybody in. If you hear to speak on item three or staff, please raise your hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter?
I do.
Thank you. Move on to staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. For the record, Meredith Record, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. Case number MS eleven dash oh-three is a request for approval of a final plat with dedications for property zoned planned commercial development at seventy-four ninety-five West Twenty-Ninth Avenue. I'd like to enter into the record the comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, case file and packet materials, and the contents of this digital presentation. The property is located within the City of Wheat Ridge, and all proper noticing and publication requirements have been met. Therefore, council does have jurisdiction to hear this case. This is the site, which is outlined in red. I think people are pretty familiar with it. It's got right-of-way on three sides, on Twenty-Ninth Avenue to the south, Wadsworth to the west, and then the interior corner of Thirtieth and Webster at the very northeast corner of the property. The site is currently vacant with just some surface improvements. You can see the parking and some of the concrete that's there, and also a wellhouse for the water pump for the property. This is a copy again of the zoning overlay on the aerial photo. The property is zoned planned commercial development, and you can see that the surrounding land uses are a little bit varied. We've got R-two to the north, R-one A as well, which is the lighter color yellow. To the south is R-two. The land uses on the north and the east sides are basically low-density residential, single-family residential with some duplexes sprinkled in there. On the south is the municipal building and Hayward Park. And then, of course, across the street on the west side of Wadsworth is Olinger Crown Hill Martry in unincorporated Jefferson County. We reviewed this, a final development plan for the property for construction of a forty-six, forty-eight thousand square foot medical office building. I believe the council approval was in September, and the plating is the final step of the process. This is the second sheet of the development plan that was approved by council. And just to point out to those in the audience and watching on TV that the council version had a modified access point. Instead of Thirty Fifth Avenue going through from Webster, excuse me, from Wadsworth over to Webster Street, the access was modified before we got to city council, so that northern access point comes from Wadsworth, and there was no, no street connection in that location. This is the actual plat document itself. As I indicated, the, the intent of the plat is to finalize the property for construction of the new medical office facility. There are right-of-way dedications that do occur along Wadsworth to, to a width of twenty feet. On Twenty-Ninth Avenue, it varies from nineteen feet to six feet on the eastern portion, and then at the very northwest corner of the site where the street is not going through, there's a small right-of-way dedication that will allow us to get improvements on the corner. There will be a construction of a sidewalk in the Thirty Fifth Avenue right-of-way that would allow pedestrian access from Wadsworth over to Webster for patrons, and also for folks in the neighborhood. Along Wadsworth, we are requesting a thirty-foot right-of-way reservation for future widening of the street. The applicant will be responsible for building a ten-foot wide multi-use path, which is being reserved as a specific easement within that future reservation, and that construction of that path will occur with the office building construction. They are showing a twenty-five-foot wide emergency access easement, which extends from the very, find my cursor, north, north, there we go, northwest corner of the site from Wadsworth down through the property to Twenty-Ninth Avenue. In lieu of that, staff is recommending that we go ahead and reserve a blanket cross-access, so that there can be free, free movement for emergency vehicles through all the parking and drive areas. And finally, a drainage pond at the very southeast corner to accommodate drainage on the property. All of the agencies responding to our referrals conserve the property. Public Works has reviewed and approved the plat, and again, they're supporting the, the issue of elimination of the specific easement in lieu of a blanket easement. We did go to Planning Commission last Thursday night with this. Planning Commission recommended approval with conditions relating to both the SIA and the blanket cross-access, and those conditions are included in council's recommended motion. Staff is giving a recommendation of approval for the following reasons. All requirements of Article Four, which is the subdivision regulations, have been met, and also that the plat will accommodate the new development scenario, with the two conditions. Number one, that there be an SIA with financial guarantees at the time of recording, and that the cross-access easement be replaced with a blanket easement language. So that would conclude staff report. I would be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Move on to public comment. Do we have anybody here to speak on item number three from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to council questions or discussion. Any comments or questions from staff or from council? Ms. Adams?
I have one quick question, Meredith. I cannot remember, and I have the plans at home on the dining room table, but the bigger plans than this. Is the driveway from Twenty-Ninth lined up with the driveway from the city? I think we talked about that, now I can't remember.
It is.
Okay. I wasn't certain of that. Thank you. Thanks for the work on this.
Sure.
Any other questions from council? Was the public hearing in a motions in order?
I move to approve Resolution forty-two two thousand and eleven, a resolution approving a final subdivision plat on property zone planned commercial development located at seventy-four ninety-five West Twenty-Ninth Avenue. Case number MS eleven zero-three MCPN for the following reasons. All requirements of Article Nine of the Code of, of the Development and Zoning and Development Code have been met. It will accommodate the new development scenario with the property, subject to the following conditions. A subdivision improvements agreement with financial guarantees will be required at the time of plat recording. A twenty-foot wide, twenty-foot, foot-wide emergency access easement through the site be eliminated and replaced with a blanket cross-access easement.
The motion for approval was seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Get it on. There's my microphone. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item four is a motion to accept the two thousand and ten comprehensive annual report. Councilmember Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to accept the two thousand and ten comprehensive annual financial report. Section ten fifteen of the Municipal Charter for the City of Wheat Ridge requires that independent audit be performed annually of all city accounts. The CPA firm of Swanhorst and Company LLC performed the audit of the city's financial statements for the year ended December thirty-first, two thousand and ten. A representative from Swanhorst and Company will be at October twenty-fourth, two thousand and eleven city council meeting to present the two thousand and ten CAFR to city council for acceptance.
Thank you. Want to have a presentation before we make a motion?
Good evening. My name's Wendy Swanhorst. I'm with Swanhorst and Company. You probably got earlier sometime your comprehensive annual financial report, and hopefully also this management letter, which is our communication to you. This letter tells you what it is that we do, and that is simply that these numbers come from your accounting records, and you guys, as the council, hire us to tell you that we think these numbers are fairly stated in all material respects. And so within this report, you'll find our opinion letter that tells you that we think that we are. The other thing that we're responsible to, to tell you is if we see any weaknesses in your controls, or anything that could misstate these numbers. And just so you know, this letter has some recommendations regarding internal controls and some compliance issues that we put in this letter, but nothing that rose to that significant level that we thought could cause these, these financial statements to be materially misstated. So I, I think with that, I'll just let you ask questions, if you have any, on either the letter or the financial statements.
Does council have any questions for Swanhorst? Guess none? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Motion's in order.
Thank you. I move to accept the two thousand and ten comprehensive annual financial report from Swanhorst and Company LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
They have a motion for approval of item number four, seconded by Councilmember Stites. Please poll the council.
Oh, discussion.
Ms. Jay?
I noted in the recommendations in the report, two items that are of concern to me. The first one being that the city has a large liability for unused employee vacation time. Our manager has been kind of mentioning this several times, so I, I really want to keep that in, in our perspective, because this is over a million dollars, and we have started just a fund to start building toward that, which is about fifty thousand. And number two, the supplemental budget, the city correctly approved supplemental budget items, but the resolutions do not clearly state the resources to be used. I, I would like to make sure that we do that, so that we know that whatever it is we are deciding upon, that these are expenditures that are not in our budget, and they are coming from our reserves, so that we are aware of, of pretty much where we're at.
Please poll the council on the motion.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item five is Resolution forty-six dash two thousand and eleven. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Resolution number forty-six two thousand and eleven, a resolution adopting a revised city purchasing policy and rescinding all prior resolutions in conflict therewith. Here we go. There are three amendments to the city purchasing policy recommended for the city council approval. One, increase the purchasing card single-tracks action limit from one thousand to three thousand. Revise the purchasing signature approval levels to the following department designee up to four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine. Department Director, five thousand to fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine. City Manager, fifteen thousand to thirty-four thousand nine ninety-nine, and City Council, thirty-five thousand and greater. Revise the purchasing acquisition limits for goods, for the following informal quotes for goods, three thousand and one dollar up to twenty-five thousand, formal bids for goods, twenty-five thousand and one dollar and up. The following policy amendment, amendments are recommended in an effort to improve the city's responsiveness to both internal and external customers, and to increase efficiencies in staff, with the overall goal of making city, the city more business-friendly with city purchasing practices. The recommended policy changes are aligned with the effort of the city by making and to create least restrictive environment in the city purchasing practices. Additionally, the policy changes would streamline the purchasing and accounting process for the purchases and payment of goods and services in the following way. Increase the revenue share in the purchasing card program. Reduce the number of purchase orders processed. Provide quicker payment to vendors. Use less paper. A positive effort to go green. Yeah. Increase the speed at which vendor payments can be processed. Eliminate redundancy in approval processes. Allow time for staff to evaluate new best practices, such as environmentally preferable purchasing. Assist staff in maintaining our current staffing level of one point five FTEs in the purchasing program. Overall, the city's purchasing policy provides direction on how appropriate funds, funds approved by the city council in the annual operating budget are procured.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution number forty-six two thousand and eleven, a resolution adopting a revised city purchasing policy and rescinding all prior resolutions in conflict therewith.
Is there a second?
Second.
They have a motion for approval of item number five. It was seconded by Councilmember Langworthy. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
The motion carries seven to zero.
Item six is Resolution thirty-six dash two thousand and eleven. Councilmember Demott?
Thank you. Resolution number thirty-six two thousand and eleven, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for ambulance services among the city, the Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District, and Rural Metro of Central Colorado Incorporated. Beginning in January two thousand and six, the City of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District contracted ambulance services with Pride Mark Paramedic Services LLC within each entity's boundaries. That contract has since expired. The city purchasing division issued a request for a proposal for this IGA. There were four proposals received. Interviews were conducted with three of the submitting firms. The number one ranked firm is Rural Metro of Central Colorado Incorporated, doing business as Pride Mark Paramedic Services.
Is motion in order? Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution number thirty-six two thousand and eleven, approving an intergovernmental agreement for ambulance services among the city, the Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District, and Rural Metro of Central Colorado Incorporated.
Is there a second? The motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Adams. Mr. Goff, did you want to make any quick comments about the comment you made in the, earlier?
We were provided with the review of the IGA, and there were a number of small matters that, that they asked us to change, and in most cases, there were sort of typos. There were some, some dates that needed to be corrected, and we made all those corrections, except for one, which we found for the review, we determined was not a typo. So we're pleased with the agreement and urge the council to approve it.
Do we have any comments from the public on item six? Please poll the council on item six.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item seven is Resolution forty-three dash two thousand and eleven. Councilmember Jay?
Resolution forty-three dash two thousand and eleven, a resolution approving submittal of the application for a two thousand and twelve local government grant to Jefferson County Open Space for the acquisition of the Martenson Elementary School site. At issue, the Jefferson County Open Space Agreement has a local government grant program that allows cities to apply for matching funds for acquisition, new construction, or maintenance projects. As part of the requirements for the submittal of the grant application, an approved resolution is required by the Jefferson County Open Space Department, showing city council support for the requested project. Funds from the local government grant can be, are awarded annually by the Open Space Department to cities and districts in Jefferson County. Percentage of matching funds is required from the city attributable, from the city's attributable share of open space funds to match the grant request. The two thousand and eleven, excuse me, two thousand and twelve recommended local grant, grant application is for the acquisition of the Martenson- The 2012 recommended local grant application is for the acquisition of the Martinson Elementary School site.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 43-211, a resolution approving submittal of the application of a 2012 local government grant to Jefferson County open space for the acquisition of the Martinson Elementary School site.
Second. We have a motion for approval, stated in the pack. It was seconded by Councilmember Sang. Questions on the main motion? Ms. Adams?
I understand that, I don't know, Ms. Manwaring, have we ever, once we are approved for the grant, that we have turned it down? Have we ever done that?
Not to my knowledge.
How close is Kendrick, the park, and this particular park? And I know, I've seen them on a map, but I don't know how close they are.
Are you referring to our vacant parcel on Kendall or?
Kendall, I'm sorry, Kendall, yeah.
They are, they're probably a two to three blocks apart.
Pretty close, pretty close. You know, my concern here is, and I know there's a process that will take place after, if in fact, we do receive this grant, a process would take place with the community to be able to get their input on what they'd like to see there. Would it not be easier if we applied for this, for the property that we've promised the park to the community, the Kendall, is it on Kendall, Kendall and 44th? And then if in fact, we go through the process with the school district and find out what they would like for the deposition of this particular building, in that I understand they're having an election and maybe there'd be some decisions made within their organization as to what they would like to have done with it, or maybe a charter school would come. Would we be more beneficial for us to apply for what we've promised in that neighborhood at Kendall and then ask to switch it over to Martinson if those pieces start coming together at that location? Would that be better, maybe?
It could possibly be better. I just don't, it isn't an option for us, for Jefferson County at this time. We needed to choose one or the other.
To be able to apply for the grant, we have to choose. We can't choose for, the initial site that the council had chosen through our parks master plan was Kendall, and then this perhaps came open, and so the council, I know, did direct to go ahead at our retreat and pursue options. I didn't know at that time the option would be to apply for a grant because the building, of course, obviously, we have no clue how much asbestos are in it or what would happen with that building. If we would get this grant, and I'd hate to refuse the grant upon the fact that we would have a council, my future council, that wouldn't want to buy this building on a payment system from the school district. So that's a concern of mine, so I'll have to consider my vote. Thank you.
Ms. Berry?
Is the grant application just limited to purchase of the property? Would it be also development of the property?
The grant is just for the acquisition of the property with the intent that the council could assess the viability of the building at a later time, but the Parks and Recreation Master Plan documents that that district is in need of a neighborhood park. So the intent was, because so much of the development already exists on the site in terms of playing fields and playgrounds, that it replace the 44th and Kendall site.
I know the 44th and Kendall site, I mean, it is along a commercial area in some sense. I think it makes, even though it's been split up and it's less valuable as a commercial area than it was originally, you know, in some sense, I think that's better. But, you know, I've heard several people, and even people in that area, talk about if we purchase that property and turn it into a park now, it really negates any possibility in the future of having a neighborhood school there. And I know it's not needed right now, but we hope that the area redevelops at some time, and having a neighborhood school is important in a community. And I'm wondering whether acquisition could mean looking, talking to the school district about a possible long-term lease so that we don't preclude it being used as a school property and as a park, which there are a ton of examples across Jeffco of that being done, that the grant application would allow you to look at a long-term lease. You could acquire it through a lease rather than a purchase.
Our discussions with the school district, the school district indicated to us that there is another school in Arvada they're retaining just for those reasons, but that they don't feel that's going to happen at this location, and they wish to dispose of the property. So that's a possibility to discuss a lease arrangement with them, but they've indicated that they'd like to dispose of the property.
Well, the question was more towards, the grant is for acquisition, could acquisition include long-term lease rather than outright purchase?
I don't believe so. I could check with Jefferson County, but let's see, I'm trying, I'm thinking here while I'm, I think a long-term lease would negate the need to apply for an acquisition grant.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion for approval for acquisition of Martinson Elementary, as stated in the pack. Any other comments or questions?
Is it possible that, I realize we're in a time, and there may be a way of handling this, that we're in a time situation where we need to apply for the grant at this time? Can we put some sort of a, an amendment to where, that if we do receive the grant, that we would have some qualifications or alternative thoughts about the fact that we could get the grant, the building would cost too much to tear down, to do abatement for asbestos, reclaiming it for use, and we would get ourselves into a financial situation where it's more expensive to develop that property for a park? And the other ramifications that I'm concerned about, as much as I want a park, and I want either this park at Kendall or a park at Martinson. So what I'm trying to do is can we kind of put our tabs on this grant to get this grant that it either, that we go ahead with it, but if the cost of operating it, then we can then switch and say that's too much, and we let's go back to our Kendall idea? As well as the fact that we're going to have park, more personnel to take care of it? I don't know how to word that or if anybody's interested in it, but I would like to do something to guarantee that we do get a park and district too, but I want it to, that we are in the position to make the best decision as to whether this is the way to do it versus the possibility also that it could become, go back to a school.
Well, you could always not accept the grant when you get the grant, if you want to do something different, right? Joyce?
That's correct, and I think, I believe council is aware that the Community Development Block Grant application funds are for the acquisition of this property as well.
Have we ever purchased property, grant money's free, but then it costs us also, so we need to be clear on that. But have we ever done this where there's been a facility on? Have we acquired a park where there's been a facility that is on that grounds that needs due diligence to figure out asbestos and costs and stuff? Have we ever done that before? Because not when I've been on for eight years, but I didn't know.
Actually, the 44th and Kendall property once had a restaurant that sat at that location, and it was acquired and the restaurant was demolished.
And we paid for the demolition of the restaurant after we received the grant? And, okay, thank you.
Ms. Stites?
Well, let it be known that we're not at all, by any means, buying the property tonight. You know, all we're doing is laying the groundwork in case something happens, but you know as well as I do, the government takes so long anyway, and it takes enough, you know, several months on these grants, that all we're doing right now is laying the foundation for possibly, you know, looking at it, but we would be dead and we would be wrong if we didn't start doing this groundwork now. So if we ever do get to a point, then we'll have it all in place. But I just want everybody to know we're not buying the ground tonight or anything like that. All we're doing is taking steps so months from now, possibly, something could happen down there.
I'm really aware of that, and I want to proceed with that so that we have gone forward and we have applied for a grant so we can do that. I'm just trying to put a little bit of a look, see, a stop, to make sure that, should we get the grant, that we can make a solid decision for our city as to this is the best way to get that park, be it that park or Kendall.
And there will be those opportunities to discuss all those issues, you know, use of the building or not, if we want to move forward with the acquisition or not. I think what is unknown today is how Jefferson County will treat the award of the grant, if we decide to use it for something else. I mean, they have changed their process recently, as has they changed their process with the Community Development Block Grant awarding of funds too. So we just don't know how they're going to treat it this year. But again, like I think as Councilmember Stites said, there's no hard and fast decisions being made tonight. It's just if we get, you know, to apply for a grant or not, and you can always make a decision to not accept it or ask the county to allow us to use it for different use. So I think all those options are still open for council.
I'm comfortable with that because we keep the process going and we take advantage of the opportunity, but we are in tune to what we should be looking at in the future that is the best for that neighborhood.
Yeah, and we'll definitely have discussions.
Get them a park, if it's necessary, school back, et cetera, et cetera.
Any other questions before we poll the council on item seven? Ms. Berry?
I should probably know this by now, so I apologize, but out of all the open space funds, you know, a certain percentage is basically carved out for each municipality out of certain accounts. I don't think there's anything in open space that's like totally competitive, that doesn't come out of a portion accounted to the municipalities. Is that true? The joint venture grant's not a competitive grant that if you don't apply for it, you're missing out and you can't go apply for it, and it come out of your portion, your share next year?
Now, let me explain how it works, and I think that'll answer your question. We have what we call our attributable share, which is based on our population, and that's the distribution of the one half cent sales tax collected at the county level. And then in the past, Jefferson County has had what we call a joint venture grant, and every city was able to apply for additional funding in a somewhat competitive atmosphere for joint venture projects that open space would match. And so we were guaranteed that you would get some portion, or you were guaranteed to get a grant, whether it was fully funded or not, but you were, we were given additional funds every year for a joint venture grant. The county has changed their process now, based on the funding they have available, and they have one pot of money. All cities and districts are now competing for that one pot of money. The open space department would like to choose projects that are, have an impact. And so what they're telling the cities is if you have a really good project, it looks like it'll have a good impact, then you may be funded this year. Don't expect funding every year like it has been in the past. And that's why they changed the name to the local government grant. So in 2011, or 2012, we make a decision, if council chooses to make this decision to acquire this property, there's still an annual grant cycle. 2012, the city can apply for a grant to say, develop the property or move over to the Kendall property. So it has changed. We have our attributable share, but we still have a grant opportunity to be competitive for funds that are not part of our attributable share.
But they still try to spread that out, spread the wealth around the county, it sounds like, but maybe they pick one project over another.
This is the first year for it.
For it, so you don't really know.
We don't know, and they did ask us to set, to submit two priorities, which we've never done before. So our two priorities were to acquire Martinson or develop 44th and Kendall. I can only apply for a grant for one of those two projects. So based on the CDPG funding and setting things in line, if council would like to acquire Martinson, this resolution applies for a grant to acquire Martinson.
Well, my memory wasn't that bad then.
Not at all. It's just, it's changed a little bit.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's just another question I have. I think it's important. Joyce, when we apply for these, can the building be a park? Because we could use it for whatever activities we want. We could also use the building. The building does not have to be destroyed when we go through the next process, if we end up going through the next process, right?
That is correct.
Doesn't have to be open space park, park. It can be a building.
Well, it needs to be used for parks and recreation purposes.
Right, so whatever maybe the building in fact could. I've given this a lot of thought. I won't be able to support this at this time, knowing it is just the first step, but I'll tell you why it's prying on my mind a little bit, is Russell Elementary in Arvada was a school that needed to be abandoned due to low usage with the school district, and that building was purchased by Head Start and has been brought a great, great value to that community with the Head Start program. So I think there may be uses for that building that at this time, locking us in, locking us in, I know it's not a lock-in, but I'd hate to refuse a grant. And right now, I don't think we're ready to move forward with that, so I know I won't be supporting this.
Any other questions before we poll the council on item seven? Please poll the council.
Motion carries six to one, with Councilmember Adams voting no.
Thank you. Item number eight is Resolution 44-2011. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Resolution Number 44-2011, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2011 capital investment program budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $360,000 for bus shelters and approving a contract with the Colorado Department of Transportation for the bus shelter installation project number 18526. In November 2010, the Colorado Department of Transportation initiated a call for projects related to transit improvement to various government agencies using faster funding, transit funds available for the fiscal year 2010, 2011. The city submitted an application and was awarded funding to install 30 bus shelters at selected locations throughout the city. The project includes purchase and installation of bus shelters and supporting fixtures. The Colorado Department of Transportation will administer the project state funding while the city will manage the shelter purchase and installation. The total project amount is estimated at $360,000. Entering into an intergovernmental agreement with CDOT is necessarily to formally authorize the project and allow the purchase to commence. Now, this is the great part here. The IGA provides that the city pay 20% of the cost of the project with reimbursement of 80% of the cost, not to exceed $288,000. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 44-2011, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2011 capital investment program budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $360,000 for bus shelters and approving a contract with the Colorado Department of Transportation for the bus shelter installation project number 18526.
Is there a second? Is there a second? The motion for approval of item number eight, seconded by Councilmember Adams, discussion on the bus shelter installations. Please poll the council. Item nine is Resolution 40... Oh, pardon.
I forgot to report on that one. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Item nine is Resolution 47-2011. Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution Number 47-2011, a resolution approving a contract with the Colorado Department of Transportation for the Kipling Street Multi-Use Trail from 32nd to 44th Avenue, Project Number 18583. The city was awarded funding for a multi-use trail project on Kipling Street from 32nd to 44th Avenue through the Denver Regional Council of Government, Dr. Cog, Transportation Improvement Program, TIP, in March 2011. The project includes the construction of a trail to accommodate pedestrians and bicyclists. The federal grant will provide $2,473,000 to assist in funding the estimated $3,178 project. The Colorado Department of Transportation will administer the project's federal funding while the city will manage the project design and construction. Entering into an intergovernmental agreement with CDOT is necessary to formally authorize the project. The IGA provides the city finance the cost of the project with CDOT reimbursement of 78% of the cost not to exceed $2,473, or $2,473,000. Motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 47-2011, a resolution approving a contract with the Colorado Department of Transportation for the Kipling Street Multi-Use Trail from 32nd Avenue to 44th Avenue, Project Number 18583.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion for approval seconded by Councilmember DeMott, discussion on item nine. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 10, Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce motion to approve necessary actions and preparation in the event of a runoff election following November 1st, 2011 election. Now, follow me here because here's the issue. There are four candidates running for city clerk in the November 1, 2011 election. Charter Section 3.7 states that the city clerk shall be elected by a majority of the vote of the electors. Because it is possible that in a field of four candidates, no one candidate will receive a majority, 50% vote, it is necessary to establish procedures for runoff election if needed so that one candidate can be elected by a majority vote. Currently, no procedures exist for such a runoff election.
Do you want to make any comments, Mr. Dahl?
Sure. The Council, the city clerk and I provided the council with a couple of products that will enable you, we believe, to set up the potential and the rules for a runoff election and for the office of city clerk in the event that no one of the four candidates receives a majority. At a minimum, city clerk and I are recommending that the council take at least the following actions. First, appoint two members to the Election Commission. That's a commission that's contemplated by and formed by the city's charter. That's a three-person commission and the city clerk serves on that commission in addition to two persons you would appoint, and I believe the packet has names of persons who've indicated they're willing to serve as members of the Election Commission. And that commission by charter is allowed to provide procedures where the procedure for any election matter is in doubt, and that's certainly the case here. We will, the city doesn't have on its books procedures for the conduct of a runoff election for the office of city clerk. And so the first thing that we'd recommend is that you certainly fill that commission out so that that's the go-to body we can go to, to answer questions and help us provide for procedures. Secondly, we believe it will be, it's really only the province of the council, and the council will need to actually call and direct that notice be given of a special election to the extent one is needed for the office of runoff city clerk. And third, we'd ask that you approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount suggested, I think, $30,000 suggested by the city clerk based on his research, to be able to pay for that election. That, in our opinion, is the minimum the council does need to do to allow us to be prepared for that, the eventuality of needing a runoff. Council could go further and determine what the election date itself should be rather than as the resolution provides, allowing the Election Commission to do that. Council could go further and provide the specific procedures that would be followed in that election or some of them. And if we wish to do that, we've provided an ordinance that you could consider tonight or at a later meeting doing that. You could certainly do the resolution and quit there, and we believe that that would give the Election Commission, the city clerk enough direction, enough authority to conduct the runoff election if one is needed. Does the city clerk have anything more to add to that?
No, there'll be certainly more comments as we get into it.
Okay.
Okay, well, I guess we should start with some motions so we can discuss it. So, Mr. Stites, you want to make your first motion?
I move to appoint Peter Marks and Lloyd Levy as members of the Election Commission established pursuant to Charter Section 2.4, terms to expire on the date of the first regular city council meeting in December 2011, and that said members be eligible for the reappointment at that time.
Is there a second? We have a motion for approval to appoint two board members or commission members to the Election Commission, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion on the two board members? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, I move to direct the Election Commission to set a date and governing procedures for a runoff of the November 1st, 2011 election if needed on or before October 31st, 2011.
We have a motion for setting the terms of the election for a date, procedures for runoff, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion on that motion?
Just, you look perplexed, so.
I said, Ms. Berry. Go ahead and speak.
You know, I think, you know, elections are just incredibly important and so much of elections are, you know, in statute or charter and it surprises me that the runoff process really wasn't thought about in the charter. The way that the charter reads, the Election Commission can interpret and anything that really isn't set in ordinance or in charter, and the Election Commission changes every couple of years. So it's troubling to me that the, an election commission in not a public process could set the procedure for a runoff election, and that could change every two years when there's a new election commission. And so I think what the election, the commission should do, and I think it's important that they do it before the election, which that's the way the resolution is worded, is if they set this procedure in place before October 31st, then, you know, before the election or after the election, that this process should be codified and it should be set in ordinance and we should have public input on this procedure rather than every two years an election commission goes off and sets a procedure and it can change. Because I think that the public perception of that could be not the greatest. And so for me, I think part of this resolution should be, once the Election Commission sets their procedure, it should be brought before council as an ordinance and it should be codified in the codes and we should hear public testimony on the procedure. And I know we're running really close and that may, whether we do it by emergency ordinance or resolution right now and let the Election Commission do it, there's not a lot of opportunity for public input. But following November 1st, I really do think whatever the Election Commission puts forward should be discussed at public hearings for an ordinance and it should be codified in the code and it shouldn't be subject to two members and the city clerk changing it every two years. Because I think that's just opening the opportunity for problems in the future. So with that, I think I would want to amend the ordinance to say that...
Well, excuse me, Ms. Berry, it's just a motion, right? There's no resolution or ordinance. It's item number two.
Right.
So you just amend the motion.
Right. It's a resolution, so I just want to...
Oh, no, it's not. Item two is not a resolution. It's just a motion to direct them. The third motion is the resolution.
Oh, it's the resolution. Okay.
So the second motion you're dealing now, you would just amend the motion to direct them to bring something back.
So I would amend that to say, the election is in November, they'd be setting the procedure in October, that before, the term expired December 31st, right?
The Election Commission's term expires as of the first meeting of the council in December.
In December. Okay, but they could be reappointed.
They can be reappointed, yes.
Right. I just, I think that within, you know, probably within three months following the election, you know, the Election Commission should bring forward an ordinance to council for setting the procedures for the runoff election so we can codify it in ordinance. So within three months following this election.
Is there a second for that amendment?
I'll second that.
Okay. So basically, we're amending the second motion by Mr. Stites, which is not a resolution, it's not an ordinance. Yeah, it's just a motion to direct the Election Commission, and we're adding this additional direction. Ms. Sang, you had a comment?
Well, I disagree with Ms. Berry. I think that that's exactly what you have an election commission for. They oversee the elections and I think all part of that is setting the date, the time. So I will not be voting for this amendment.
But, Ms. Berry, would you mind just repeating it so everybody knows what we're voting on again?
Yeah, within three months following the November 1st, 2011, the Election Commission shall make recommendations to the council for an ordinance setting a runoff procedure. It's not to set the date of any runoff election, it's to set the procedure, whether it's by mail ballot, whether it's the first two candidates. There's a lot of choices in a runoff procedure. And then, so the Election Commission, I think it should be in their purview to make those recommendations, but that we should have codified it in ordinance and we should have public hearings on that ordinance.
Okay, and that was seconded by Councilmember J. Mr. Dahl, do you have any questions on that before we ask council?
No, I think I understand that I've been writing some notes for how that would change number two. Probably be something like you'd add to number, to motion, and bring forward such procedures for consideration by the council as an ordinance. And I just calculated three months prior to February 1, 2012, so we weren't not worried about how many days 90 is.
Okay, so discussion on that amendment?
That's what I believe would be passed if you passed the amendment.
Right. Ms. Adams?
I have a question for Mr. Snow. I guess this is your fourth year as clerk, is that correct?
Well, fifth, including the...
Well, there you go. Okay. So, help me with the Election Commission and the people that have been, I don't need names, but it's my understanding this commission has not been an active commission, in fact, that we haven't really advertised or done well getting people. I'm not pointing fingers, but it's not been a solidified group.
On the first part of your question, that is true. There's not been an election commission formed and members appointed in my tenure. But to correct you, there's been a lot of effort to actually find members.
Okay.
Unfortunately, it doesn't sound very exciting maybe to some people until it comes to this. Now it's exciting and I have two very willing and very able citizens who want to serve. And that's the way, you know, it goes sometimes.
I guess my, by pointing making that, I certainly know that you probably have because you do a great job, but tried to get people in the fact that I, it's verifying for me, if I'm understanding Ms. Berry's comments, it's verifying for me that this needing to be codified through council would make it more solid, not that their recommendations would not be taken or that we're not charging them with what we need to charge them with. That's my feeling. Do you have...
Yeah, no, I do have, I do have some strong feelings about it. I strongly agree that with Mrs. Sang's comments, that the Election Commission is given this power and we should not underestimate or doubt such ability for citizens, and myself, to make decisions that are uncertain. It is exactly what it's formed for. The amendment that Ms. Berry makes to it is to say we would also like to ask them to make recommendations for codification. I also agree with that, but it is important, in my opinion, that that is done after this all takes place. There are so many different options of how to run an, to actually carry out a runoff. And I think once we've actually had a chance to do this this time, we're going to be able to look back and see what worked well, what didn't, and I think it is perfectly fine to ask the Election Commission to actually make recommendations for codification of those parts that need to be, once we've had a chance to walk through it. Right now, we're kind of up against the wall and it's not really, with the time we have, it's impossible, in my opinion, to do a really good job of codifying. So it is what it is. Enough said, you know, I support both sides of what I've heard tonight, so as long as we're clear, as long as everybody's clear in what we're talking about, you know.
Ms. Sang?
I agree with Ms. Berry in her comment and what she had in her amendment is that we need something to establish in our code what we do in this case. But I agree also with Mr. Snow that this is not the time to do that. This is, this comes after. And I just don't think that we should be putting something in the code at this time that may not be workable in the future.
And I understand that, that's why I made it for, you know, 90 days after the election. So it's still clear in everybody's mind what worked, that didn't work, we can get it done, and it's well before any more elections so that there's a lot of time for public input and consideration.
So is everybody clear that this amendment does not set the ordinance now, it sets the ordinance to come later after November 1st, the election?
Right.
I mean...
Well, if she doesn't even set the ordinance, it literally just asks them to make recommendations for it, so...
After the election. Ms. J?
With perhaps different criteria.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Whatever they come back and recommend to you, they're going to recommend.
Right, but I mean, that it could be after it's recommended and after we work it, that there could be some different criteria. That's what I understand? Okay, then I'm still comfortable.
It's whatever council approves in the end. Right. Ms. Adams?
Let me ask this, Jerry. I guess my main kicker here is, it's important to me for transparency for our citizens that if the vote, and I guess there's recount information too, as far as how close the vote is, correct, that you've got to deal with.
Recount criteria are very explicit. Those, there's no question around that.
Okay. Anyway, what I was going to ask is that if this, since there are four people and it could be as small as two to 10 or whatever difference in the numbers of people, of the difference of who would in fact be the clerk, that it's very clear prior to November 1st, this process, is that taken care of in motion two?
Motion two takes care of the process now for this election.
Right.
Ms. Berry's amendment takes care of the processes after the election.
Okay.
So we got an amendment we have to vote on first and then the main motion.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that amendment.
Last, just to sort of qualify that, I think what you might be getting at is what is exactly is going to be recommended or what is going to be decided by an election commission. So when we say date and procedures, that might sound vague, but what's intended is the procedures mean who is actually going to be in the runoff election? How are they selected? Right, I think we have a good idea about that. What, the other thing, some of the things you may have read about are also such things as what if somebody steps out? What if first and second place in the election, somebody, the second place decides to step out? What do you do? Those are some of the procedures we'll set in the next week. week, so that it's very clear, there's no question, and there's no surprises. And we're thinking very hard about that, so I assure you, we'll be doing everything we have to make sure we don't have any backlash. Yeah.
Well, and the way that, I mean, the way that the election, whether it'll be mail off, whether it be polling place, I mean, there's costs associated with that, but there's also, you know, trying to get the most voters out. I mean, so, there's, there's got to be a balance there, too. And so, I think, that's why, I think, okay, it's too late to, to try to do this in ordinance right now. You know, I agree with you on that. But we need to get this done, and we need to have some public input on it, and it needs to be done right after the election. And let's just get this done, and set a procedure, which really should have been done in the charter to begin with.
Okay. So, we have the amendment by Councilmember Berry, that was seconded by Ms. Jay. Please vote on the amendment.
Motion to amend passes four to three, do I see? Just, yes. Passes four to three with councilmembers Demott, Stites, and Sang voting no.
Okay. So, we have the main motion that was read by Mr. Stites, as amended. Please poll the council, as amended.
And that motion carries seven to, six to one, with councilmember Sang voting no.
Okay. Now, we're on to the last, well, the third motion in the packet. That's the resolution.
I move to approve a resolution which, one, calls a runoff of the November 1st, 2011 election, on the date as determined by the election commission, if such election is required, and, two, directs the city clerk to issue notice of the same.
Would you mind adding...
Resolution 48.
Yes, that's good. And would you mind adding, Councilmember Stites, a third item, which came up after the council action form was created, and approves a supplemental appropriation in connection therewith, since the resolution you have in front of you does that?
And that is resolution 48-2011, correct, Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, this will be 48. You're correct.
We have a motion to approve resolution 48, as stated in the packet, plus an amendment with Mr. Dahl. Any, our second, second for that? Motion for approval of resolution 48, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion on the resolution? Please poll the council.
And that motion carries seven to zero.
So, I believe that's everything we needed to do.
You...
You specified the amount. Mr. Dahl stated that as part of the resolution motion, for $30,000.
I think you deferred the question of a special meeting on October 31, although I think the motion that was taken, when you pulled that off of the consent calendar, was just to cancel those two meetings, and so unless you take any other action, there will not be a special meeting on October 31st.
Right. The study session and the regular meeting in November were canceled earlier.
All right.
But not then, okay. All right, good.
Thank you.
I guess that concludes our agenda for the evening. We'll move on to city managers' matters.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to announce that Senator Bennett was in town today, visiting the Wheat Ridge Middle School. He came to emphasize the importance of principals in our school systems, and the Wheat Ridge Middle School has a new principal, and Jefferson County, Jefferson County School District is putting a lot of resources into our middle school right now, and it's kind of a test case. So, he was out today to recognize them. So, I think that's, that's a good sign of, for Wheat Ridge, that good things are happening in our middle school. Also, I would like to wish Applejack Liquor happy birthday, 50 years in existence. They celebrated it last week. And also, I attended the off-leash dog park, leash cutting this weekend with my dog, and it's at Fruitdale Park, so I'd invite all citizens to go out and enjoy that park. It's a great, great off-leash dog park. Thanks.
Mr. Dahl, city attorneys' matters?
I don't, but I'm going to take my dogs to the dog park this week. I promise. Now, it's on tape. They know, they're watching, so they know I...
Be on YouTube tomorrow.
Yeah.
Mr. Snow, city clerk's matters?
Yes, obviously, we're drawing very close to the election date, so I have announcements I'll make. Some of them are repeats, but it never hurts. So, you heard it from a couple other folks tonight. The election is November 1st, not November 8th, as you've seen them on most of the printed calendars out there, which is unfortunate. That election will close at 7:00 PM, so it's very important that you get your mail-in ballots to a drop-off location, or get them stamped right away, and mail them to the elections division for Jefferson County. You may bring those to City Hall and drop them off in my office, city clerk's office, normal hours between 8:00 and 5:00 PM, up until Election Day. And on Election Day, we are open, and the ballot box will be available from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM on Election Day. If you are registered to vote, and you did not receive your ballot, now is the time to go do something about it. The date is, you've missed the date for you to actually get that ballot mailed to you, but you may still vote today and all the way up until Election Day until 7:00 PM, by visiting any of the county's service centers, where you can vote at any time, and you'll be completing a mail ballot on the spot. There's one other thing. I was informed that perhaps several neighborhoods throughout the city did not receive in the ballot, in the mail, the blue book. And everybody wonders about this, because they depend on these very strongly to get information and pro and con statements about the ballot issues they're voting on. I understand a bunch of neighborhoods did not get those this year. So, I have a big stack of them in my office. You're welcome to come in anytime. Call if you have questions. I'll mail one to you if it's easier. I just want to make sure you guys have an opportunity for that. Let's see. That would be all, except not an insignificant night for a bunch of you tonight, obviously. Some of the council members here are term limited, and I believe this is your last meeting. Yes? So, you're not sure? Oh, that scares me. Really? Come on. Don't do that now. Anyway, I just want to thank you all, and I, and make the comment that regardless of which direction people go, and their feelings on things, and their policy standards, or whether you're this way or that way on policies, whether or not you agree with one another, the significance of just being an elected official and serving your city is very important, and should be commended. Mrs. Sang, I have to recognize that I can, I only have fuzzy memories when I was a child, of when the city of Wheat Ridge did not have you as an elected official. And so, your contributions have been enormous, and you will always be missed. And of course, that doesn't mean you can't come back for more, but at the moment, you can't. So, anyway, I just want to thank you all for that. That's it.
Thank you. I think I will start with the three elected officials that definitely will be back in November 28th. We're going to have swearing in on November 28th. So, Ms. Berry, would you like to go first?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Adams?
Nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Sang?
Just like to thank Michael for your kind comments, and it is going to be quite a different life for me, after almost 30 years being an elected official, and I've enjoyed it thoroughly. Thank you.
Ms. Jay?
I think these three women have contributed incredibly to their city, and I am sure that the, many, many people in the public have watched their exemplary performance of being involved and informed, and very, very helpful to the, sometimes very tough decisions we make up here. I will miss them very much so.
Ms. Langworthy?
Thank you. First of all, I would like to say thank you for four years. Learned a lot from all three of you, and it's a challenge when, when you're the new one on the block, and a lot of information comes from a lot of directions. So, it's helpful when you have people who know what they're doing, and they're willing to impart their knowledge. So, and I could be one of those people not back, so I want to say, in the event that I'm not, thank you very much for having me for four years, because this is an experience that everyone should have an opportunity to try. I mean, you get to be part of your government, you get to be part of the change that you want to see, and I think it's a fantastic thing for people to do. I know it's challenging, it takes time and commitment, but you're part of something much bigger than yourself, and I think that's what's fantastic about being a council person, is that you get to be part of that. So, for that. And then I would also like to remind people that on Sunday, this, Saturday, woo, Saturday, October 29th, there will be trunk or treat at Wheat Ridge, 5 through 8. So, either, if you're interested in bringing your car and decorating it, they would love you to be there at 4:00 with 3,000 pieces of candy. And if you have children, they would love you to be there from 5:00 to 8:00 to trick or treat safely and off the street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Demott?
I think Ms. Langworthy and Ms. Jay said it very well. I echo their comments. I don't have anything else. Thanks.
Mr. Stites?
Yeah. I, like Mr. Snow, remember Wanda Sang as a young lad. I've known her for years, and I know where she lived. So, this is good. As always, it's a great time to relocate your, your business, or your home to Wheat Ridge. If you need any help, contact staff or one of us. A positive thing next month would be, if you've got college kids or anybody, make sure that their roommates or whomever has a place to go for Thanksgiving. You know, it won't put you out, and one extra mouth or two to feed, and it makes for a great evening. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. We're adjourned.
Wheat Ridge Channel 8, keeping you informed on events in your community.